Yeah, definitely.
Mr. Benito.
Yeah.
I was thinking it was a little bit peeve.
Yeah.
Oh. Wasn't there?
All right, guys.
Yeah.
Secretary. I'm on.
Good evening, everyone. This is Mayor Protown with Santa Claus here in the city of North Pole. September fifteenth, we're calling our work session to order. Adam Clerk, would you call the roll, please?
We don't do a roll.
Oh, we all bother with? Okay, thanks. I noticed that Mayor Church is online. That's good.
Yes, hello.
Hope you're starting to feel better. So the work session, as we know, addresses the proposed ordinance that has to do with solicitation of funds by whether nonprofits or anybody else on our city roads. Make a long story short. So who would like to start off with their comments? Is Jordan Nanyar?
I was opposed to the work session, so I'll follow.
Thank you. Any, any comments?
Yeah, I guess I'll start then. First of all, I'd, I'd like this ordinance to just go away. And that's a consensus for most people that I've talked to about it. I know the, the police chief and the fire chief are worried about safety. And I agree with that, but as I've stated before, there is Alaska Administrative Code that almost mirrors what we're seeing in this ordinance. And a state statute that also addresses this and so let me just start by saying that the in Title thirteen AAC oh two point one eight oh pedestrian soliciting rides are business. Says no person may solicit a ride in a manner which distracts a driver's attention, comma. Nor may a pedestrian upon a highway solicit employment, business, or contributions from the occupant of a vehicle. And I know the police chief was concerned about the, the use of the word highway there. But all through Title thirteen, the, the word highway is used intermittently with the word. Intermittently is not the right word. What's the word I'm looking for? Anyway, it's used, it, it's used the same as roadway. They're, they're used interchangeably, correct? And Title thirteen references Title nineteen AS nineteen point five nine point oh oh one definitions. Highway includes a highway, whether included in primary or secondary systems, comma, road, street, trail, walk, bridge, tunnel, drainage structure, and other similar or related structure or facility and right of way thereof. So the, the definition of the word highway includes everything in, everything in the right of way of any road. It's not just the separated highways like the Richardson. So like I said, all the way through Title thirteen, they, they use the word highway interchangeably with the, with the word roadway or, or road. And, and literally AAC zero two point one eight oh reads almost exactly like our ordinance does. And if you don't believe me, I, I've talked to so many people from DOT, several local police troopers, a local judge, lawyers, police down in South Central, and this came to me from a lieutenant in the police, police force down in South Central. It's a picture of a sign in Anchorage. It says panhandling prohibited on median or right of way. And it states thirteen AAC zero two point one eight oh. And I'm happy to show this picture to everybody to show this is the exact code that Anchorage is using to address what we're trying to address here tonight. The other, the other law, it, it's not as, you know, as close to what we're trying to do here is AS twenty eight point thirty five point one four oh A. It says a person may not purposely obstruct or block traffic on any roadway by any means. And I know the police chief says that that implies criminal intent and the judge that I spoke to said, no. It just simply states that, that like if you broke down accidentally in the middle of the road, you're not purposefully obstructing or blocking traffic. But if you are running out in the middle of traffic to stop a car to collect money from them, you are purposefully obstructing traffic. But like I said, that, that one, I, I think AAC oh two point one eight oh. Go ahead.
Sorry, just not to interrupt you. On this picture too, it also states, uh, looks like a minute Anchorage municipality code. Do you, did you look that up at all?
Yeah, I did. And that one has been repealed. That went to the Alaska Supreme Court and got, got repealed in or something like that. Oh, I can't, no, it wasn't that. I have it here if you want to read it. There was a lawsuit, Ballas et al versus municipal municipality of Anchorage. And that held that AMC fourteen point seventy point one six oh was unconstitutional. And that one, I have it here and it, it, it does, it's very troublesome. So that one did get repealed.
Councilman Brandt, if I may through the chair.
Yes.
What was so concerning about what you just said, Councilman Brandt? You said you had grave concerns for that. Could you repeat what was so troublesome about that, please?
About the one that was repealed?
Yes, please.
Oh, it just says it's unlawful to engage in active panhandling after sunset or before sunrise. When, when either the panhandler or the person being solicited is located in any of the following locations. At a bus stop, in a public transportation vehicle, or public transportation facility, in a vehicle which is parked or stopped on a public street or alleyway, in a sidewalk cafe, or within twenty feet in any direction from an automatic teller machine or entrance to a bank in the downtown improvement district. And it defines that. Anyway, so they, they were kind of stomping on some constitutional rights there. So that's why it was appealed, repealed.
So if I may through the chair, rebut, what? Why would you use that as?
Well, if you look.
Justifications.
For. I, I did not use that. I, I use the I use AAC zero two point one eight oh, not, uh, not the code that was repealed in Anchorage.
Okay.
It says both of them were on the sign, the picture of the sign that was sent to me. And the sign just shows that Anchorage is using the same AAC zero two point one eight oh that, that supposedly does not apply. So because of the use of the word highway, and that's not true.
Go ahead.
I'm sorry. Go ahead.
Oh, I was just gonna say. I, I don't, just, just where I stand, I don't mind the ordinance. However, I, I do mind the permit. I think that's uh, we're getting into some First Amendment issues and I would, I would like to see no permit for in, in the ordinance for, you know, people are seeing out, holding signs directing towards for car washes or other fundraising. I don't, I wouldn't mind, you know, if the, if the chief of police feels like he needs more to cite when he approaches somebody. I don't mind the ordinance. Uh, but I'm completely against the permit.
Other comments? All right, I'll make a couple of observations. It seems to me that when we're requiring or potentially requiring all these compliance programs for the public to deal with regarding this solicitation for funds. I think a letter that goes out to the nonprofit organizations here and the schools, et cetera, would be sufficient to put them on notice that they're going to have to designate a little parking space where traffic can pull over to facilitate, you know, the transfer those donations to whoever is soliciting them. And then if people don't do that, that's on them, not the city. We're not forcing them to do anything. So I don't think there's any way to enforce it. I don't, I don't think our city police department wants to send its officers out there to try and enforce something at that level unless there's some major incident that's occurring or about to occur, let's say in one of the roundabouts, for example. So I'm not, I think there's enough on the books already at the state level that if there was a contentious issue that popped up that the police would have something to rely on. And I doubt for most of the time that the police would even, I don't think it would hit the literally hit the radar one way or the other for any kind of enforcement agency. That's just my opinion. We're kind of a small city and I think if the agencies and the nonprofits were, and the schools were notified well in advance that this is what we expect for their safety, for their own safety, that they should enforce themselves, police themselves, as it were. That should be sufficient and that does not in any way interfere with our licensing for parades or permits for parades. That's a whole different story. This particular ordinance, I think is separate from that since it's an ordinance of the city of North Pole amending Title nine. So it's adding a new chapter. So other comments?
Um, I want to go back to what Mr. Schuster said. I agree with him completely and what you were saying too, the, the permit's very troubling. We have given out, I think, three or four permits now for this since, since we started discussing this. But along with the permit, it's not coming. The police aren't going out there and making any safer for them. We're telling them it's, it's unsafe, but here's a permit, go do it. But we, we're not sending a police officer out there to stop the traffic for them or anything. So we're not making it safer for them. I don't think a permit should be even part of this ordinance. I don't think, if this ordinance does go through, I don't think there should be an exemption. So the, the exemptions that we have in here don't even relate to the ordinance itself. So I, I think there should be no exemptions. I mean, the ordinance speaks for itself. And then do we really want to fine our kids $500 for, for, that's ridiculous. I'm sorry. That's stupid.
Other comments? Mayor Church?
Chief Smith, are you there?
Yes, I am.
In our city, how many speed limit signs are posted throughout our city?
I don't know off the top of my head.
Okay. And based on those signs, how many tickets does your police department write for speeding? Even though it's public information as to how fast you should or shouldn't go? And what is the rule about speeding? If you are caught speeding, you receive a, a warning at first and then a ticket dependent on your police officer's determination of that infraction. Is that correct, sir?
I would say that there will always be an element of the population that speeds regardless of how well the rule is posted. I don't know exactly what the ratio is on any particular street. There is no set rule regarding warnings. It, it's the officer's discretion based on a variety of factors like the person's history, the severity of the offense. In some cases, their attitude towards being contacted. All of those things play into the judgment call of whether to cite them or not.
Chair, if I may have a follow-up question.
Yes.
If this ordinance was to go through as stated, would your officers still have the same discretion for the fine and everything else related to it?
They, they would. I, I always advocate for more discretion because a a, a good officer is going to utilize that discretion properly. We have in the ordinance, more language, more information and an opportunity, more of an opportunity to educate versus an application of state statute, which is very much just the facts are the way they are. Now you're getting a citation for it. But either way, it's, it's still the officer's discretion on whether to issue the citation. Yes.
Through the chair, if I may have one more follow-up.
Yes, thank you.
Chief Smith, what is your opinion of the ordinance? And, and culpability of the ordinance if it was to turn into code? Thank you.
I think as a city, we have a responsibility to take reasonable steps to do the best we can to ensure safety. My concern is if there is nothing in place and a child is injured when we had an opportunity to introduce a reasonable restriction, and I, I would say that prohibiting people from going into the roadway and, and the language that we have is, in my opinion, reasonable. I personally have a very hard time with that situation arising when I knew I had an opportunity to at least do something to prevent it from happening. Because that's going to be the first question that's asked. And now that we've discussed it and talked about it for a significant length of time, more questions are going to be asked because it's all aware of it. We're all talking about it, right? So if, if the result is we come out of this without additional language or support for the police department to educate and guide people away from this type of behavior. We're just gonna have to tell them, hey, this happened. We're sorry it happened. You know, the, the ordinance did not pass and that's the way it goes. And then the, the public will do what they do. I, I read the amended version here, which appears to just take out the term sidewalk and then change off on the last page. And I don't, I don't have a major, a major issue with it. I, I just, I really like there being more information and more opportunity for discretion and specifically education, right? I, I really don't want to go out and cite fifteen teenage kids under this state statute that the Councilman Brandt keeps bringing up. Just because we can make an argument that it, that it fits. I, I want a position that is strong in, hey, communicate with us as a city. And let's work towards, you know, a, a workable solution for both parties that keeps them safe, but lets them continue the activity in another way. More guidelines give that, less, sometimes don't. That's also how I view the permit, by the way, not as a restriction, but just like a, hey, let's redirect this ball so we get a strike and it doesn't go into the gutter.
I, I think the permit's troubling to everybody, everybody I talked to. So I don't, I don't know how you feel about it, Anton, but I don't think the permit belongs in this ordinance. There, there's no way that we can make it safe for them, give them a permit and make it safe for them without sending a police officer out there and stopping traffic to allow them to, to so let's not do a permit. I, I think that, that's that's just going a step too far. I'd like to get rid of the permit altogether for anything other than parades where we have to supply, supply police and block roads and things like that. I don't think that, that people protesting should be required to come in and get a, a permit from the city, but that's a discussion for another day. I, so Chief Smith, are you saying that, that your officers would not be able to go out and talk to the, the kids out there and tell them you are breaking AAC oh two point one eight oh, please move along? And that won't be good enough that they will argue that? That we have to have a, a North Pole city ordinance in order to, to discourage them from doing that?
What I'm saying is for effective enforcement, it's always valuable to have more information than just as, I don't, I don't know a good way to describe it, but a, a cookie cutter. Right? So like for speeding as an example. Speeding is as simple as you can get, right? If you exceed this number, you have now broken the law, right? That approach is, is helpful in that situation, but we're talking about, we're not talking about that type of a situation. We're talking about a dynamic one with lots of variables where a group of seventeen people, there could be a wide variety of levels or how close they're getting to breaking that, that, that state statute just from person to person. Right? And so if I'm sending an officer out there with this, kind of like this cookie cutter threshold that people have to meet. It can be easy, just as easy for him to not cite anybody or be obligated to cite everybody. Right? Are you going to go out there and just cite one of them? Or are you going to cite all of them versus this that actually differentiates between? Okay, they're actually in the roadway versus on the sidewalk versus, so bottom line, I, I just always like to see more information in what we're enforcing. That's the problem with a lot of Alaska statutes is they're just incredibly thin. And so you encounter situations where it's really hard to effectively enforce them because they don't address the situations you're likely to encounter. So it's, in my opinion, always better not to have more red tape or regulation, but just to have more ways to apply it to the situation at hand, giving the officer the ability, the ability to do that and primarily to educate and say, hey, look, this is okay behavior. This is not. I, I don't want to go out there and just, well, you put one foot in the roadway, fifteen year old, now you're getting a citation from the police department. And you know what? Now I'm obligated to cite all of your friends because that's fair, right? I, I don't want to see that.
But you have discretion in that case. You just said you did. So can you tell me how our ordinance is substantially different than the administrative code that I quoted? That would make your job easier or more effective?
So in the, in the most recent version here, if we, if we go off that with the the corrections, it mentions things like.
I, I want to start with something first. Those, those corrections were voted down in the last meeting that we talked about this. So we're not even considering those tonight. That's as far as I know.
So under line fifteen, sixteen, seventeen, and eighteen. Right? We have some additional things mentioned like public roundabouts, sidewalks, medians, and other traffic infrastructure as being unsafe. Under twenty twenty one, or twenty twenty two and twenty three, we have the terms soliciting business, soliciting employment, or charitable contributions. We have the words constitutes. We have the words constitutes an impediment to the normal and safe flow of traffic. These are all considerations. They're all variables in a in a given situation where now there's more information for the officer to apply versus just okay boiler po- boilerplate, were they soliciting contributions on a highway or not? End of story. That's all the information the officer has to consider. He doesn't have any of this this other this other stuff. So I'm just saying it's always better to have a little bit more reasonable, right? Not not going to the extent that you clamp down to the point that the activity can't occur because then you're creating, kind of creating the thing you're trying to avoid um, in in a bit of governmental overreach in doing that. But it's it's always good to have to have more. It was my same argument when we talked about impounding, right? The old, the the changes to our our impound requirements, give the officer more information and more discretion. He can make a better, a better judgment call in that situation. So that's kind of the main, the main reason I support it. We haven't historically gone out and cited people under that state statute uh, for it. Um, and I I I would be interested to know, given the outcome of this, if that is the expectation of the council, that that we go out and immediately begin enforcing that in a fair and equitable manner across the board to individuals engaged in this type of behavior because that is
Hope this ordinance passes. You expect to go out and enforce this ordinance the same way that that you would enforce a state statute or or administrative code?
Obligated to it. It's a ordinance that's been in effect. However, the dis- difference here is there's more of an opportunity for education to potentially occur if they're reaching out to us first and we're giving them some guidelines. That's all.
I'm kind of wondering if um, regarding this whole matter, what if instead of an ordinance, it was a resolution where people who are raising the money had to just register and get a pamphlet saying this is how you do it here in this city. Please follow these rules and just register so we know who's doing what and when and where in the city without necessarily issuing a permit. We're just saying, oh, they popped in, they got the information, they know what they're supposed to do, like you were saying, chief, with the educating, you know, whoever it is that's gonna come in and try and raise the funds for whatever purpose. Um, it seems to me there's a, I mean, there is a big difference between a resolution and an ordinance. The resolution puts it on the books. This is how, this is our city's stance on this particular practice of soliciting contributions. And if people were to register without necessarily paying a fee or without you know, being subject to some other dunning thing, um, it seems to me that might serve everybody's purpose well and not lower the hammer on some, for example, um, children who are trying to raise funds for their school or whatever it happens to be. Or somebody coming through from out of town that wants to raise funds for something in their neck of the woods and thinks that North Pole is a good place to try and do that. So if they were to register, that would meet our resolutions tone. Um, trying to um, have some accountability for whoever's coming in to do it. And that might be a better service to us than an ordinance and have a resolution instead and still afford the police department the discretion, you know, the array of uh approaches they might take to whoever the uh, person who might be going against what our resolution recommendations were for people that wanted to raise um, funds.
We typically try to, the police department, right, I try to avoid giving advice, legal advice or info that there is not some statutory backing for. In other words, there's great value in a pamphlet, right, or providing information. But if there's not a requirement for certain behavior or prohibit, you know, certain behavior being prohibited and a and a a penalty associated, it's not the role of the police department to then go out and provide pamphlets to people in the in this type of thing because there's no connection between that and the actual enforcement of a a standard or a law or anything. So we hand out this pamphlet, let's say, just hypothetically. And then the group purposely goes and goes against the pamphlet and does exactly the opposite of what we're encouraging them to do. What do we do in that situation?
Yeah, you wouldn't have any teeth for sure. Yeah, I see what you mean.
May I make one one thing? Last year, we had a conversation uh, concerning this and we talked to the principal at the high school about it. And there was improvement. However, this year they have a new principal and things have kickstarted again. So just merely talking about it, educating about it is not gonna get the job done. Hoping that this principal stays here for longer than one year, right? Um, but at the same time, you would think that the boosters would remember what happened previously. So to me, I think we need to have something in place, something with teeth, not for financial benefit, whatever, but to tell the people that we're kind of serious about this, about being safe in in public roadways.
What if you combine the two ideas where you get rid of the permit? But there's a registration or there's something that encourages them is encourages them to get that info, right? Because that's how I viewed the permit is we have a chance to catch their idea and say, no, let's reshape it a little bit and give it back to you in this form, right? So if we still pres- preserve that opportunity, but there was, like he's saying, you know, something to deal with those that refuse, you know, refuse to do that. And just from my personal uh, philosophy on it, I would always go out and go up to the fifteen year old first and say, hey, you know, appeal to their brain, right? You shouldn't be on the road. Let's come over here, right? And and make, see if compliance can be achieved on that level. Really, it would only be the one that's like, you know, forget you, cop, I'm stepping out in the roadway anyway. That's that I'm gonna be infusing as I think if we're gonna have a standard, there there should be something, something to enforce or make that standard real in some way.
Thank you. Other comments? Mayor Church?
I may, thank you. It isn't just North Pole teams fundraising in our roundabouts. It is town teams, it is homeschoolers, it is everyone. So sending an email or letter to the principal isn't going to stop or correct all of the fundraising in the roundabouts. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Brand.
Oh, I think in that case, I, if we just send an officer out there and talk to them, they're not gonna argue with them and tell them that there's a state statute that that you're violating. We don't have to give them a ticket to, you know, please move along. This is unsafe. We don't want you doing this in our city. And if it does come to it, then then cite him, but I don't think it will. I think doing that one or two times and and the world will get out and this will just stop. It'll go away. So.
Just like the chief was saying, there's always that one percent that'll just flip off the officer or whatever and just refuse to.
And in in that case, we can ticket them for the administrative code and and that'll be that. And if they want to fight that, great, let them fight it. If we lose, okay, then we then we lost and we can come back to this. But I our our code book is a mess. I don't want to be adding to it. And I really, really don't. I don't want any kind of permit attached to this. I mean, it's pretty clear. It says what we don't want them to do. And then the exemptions say, you know, if you're not doing what you told told you not to do, then this is the exemption. So the exemptions are are don't even apply to the ordinance itself. And as far as a penalty, five hundred dollars, I'm sorry, but that's extreme.
Chief, happy medium. Can you think of one?
The only thing I was thinking is any any info that the city provides. You know, we'd have to consult the attorney, but it's always valuable valuable to have some type of release of liability. People are and that's 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 my only concern here is if and when somebody is injured accountable for it. And I want to make sure that we're doing safety of folks.
So let me ask you this. If we didn't have this ordinance on the books and somebody's out in the roundabouts and gets hurt, they're not gonna sue the city for not enforcing an ordinance that we don't have. But then if we if we have this ordinance, now you're gonna say that we're gonna have to require them to sign some sort of indemnity and and these are just kids trying to make little money to support their sports and stuff. I mean, I I don't want them having to go out and get insurance and fill out permits and all that kind of stuff.
No, I wasn't suggesting they'd be forced to sign anything just informationally. Or now your responsibility to ensure your own safety, not ours.
That's implied. If we didn't have this ordinance, it's implied. But once we have this ordinance, we have to enforce it. And if we don't, then they can come after the city. See what I'm saying? I think it's creating more liability to the city than what you're trying to prevent.
If I may, if we're putting thoughts on that, then I'm gonna stay off all the sidewalks in the town. Right? So we have to make sure that we do we treat this like all public road, like, yeah, we can't use this. Um, sidewalks. Um, those are just continuation of the sidewalks.
Yeah, the and my main point was we've had the discussion now. And we've talked about it for weeks. So if we don't do it and something does happen, that is going to be a question that's asked is why? When, why wouldn't this was an active discussion? Was it was it not carried out? But if you feel that the liability is heavier the other direction, I'm not gonna argue effective with the experience I have, it's always good to have more educational opportunity and more information officers to make. I will fairly enforce whatever it is the council decides.
Through the chair, I have a question for Mr. Brand. What what's your thoughts on the amended uh, presented by Mayor Church?
I don't like it because we voted that down at the last meeting that we discussed this. It was Anton's amendment and it was voted down four to three. Um, so to bring it back up, I I think is a moot point in my opinion.
Mayor Church, could you speak to your amended?
Um, that wasn't an amendment that I made and I wasn't aware that that was part of this packet until I received the agenda as well. Um, I ask that my name be removed from that as a sponsor as a as a substitute because I don't believe that there should be a substitute. I look at the permit as an education piece that gives every organization that chooses to come and fundraise in North Pole the same fair chance in knowing what's right and what's wrong to do in the city of North Pole. And without the permit language or some sort of language in there, allowing us as a city to educate our kids. I have three North Pole kids that have all gone through sports choir. And they have done fundraising in different ways. When I was a kid, we sold candy bars and I know that that isn't an option anymore, but uh, I did not propose the substitute and would like my name removed from that, please.
Hey, um, my next thing would be I don't, I don't mind the substitute. There is a a couple of things I would change. Um, I do agree with you, Mr. Brand, about the fine. I think that's ridiculous. I I I just, my personal feelings are, I think we're making this a lot bigger deal than it needs to be inside the city of North Pole. Um, they're high school kids. They're, you know, people normally volun- you know, trying to fundraise for money. I think this has kind of got blown out of proportion. Um, I do think that there needs to be something in place. I don't believe in entering a roadway. I, you know, I I want that to be enforced. I I think it's unsafe. Um, uh, if this substitute is the best way to get there, um, I would support it. Again, it it doesn't have the langu- uh, the permit language in there. And I I do think there are other ways to, I think the sign was kind of a great idea by Anchorage. You know, I don't see why we couldn't post that at a roundabout.
Chief Smith has already uh, recommended that.
Yeah, yeah. And so I think that's a, I I I think that's a great idea. Um, so that's just kind of where I stand again. I don't, I don't, I understand, I understand what you're saying. I don't think there's anything troubling in this um, ordinance that would keep me from passing it without a couple of minor changes.
I would say without the permits, with without any of the exemptions, the exemptions, I I don't agree with either of the exemptions. Yeah, um, because neither one of them apply to the ordinance itself. They're saying if you're not doing what we're, what we said is not in the ordinance and that says exempt, well, of course it is because it's not in the language of the ordinance itself. So if we get rid of the exemptions completely and lower this fine, um, maybe a hundred dollars or something, five hundred dollars is ridiculous. Then I would be more in support of this. I mean, the 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 ordinance itself, like I said, it reads almost identically to the administrative code that I quoted. If we got rid of the exemptions completely and lowered that penalty, I would support this.
And if we required them to give the fine to their opposing sports team?
That's up to the judge.
Very good.
Quick through the chair, chief, what is the schedule for? Fee schedule for code violations? Is that where we get the five hundred dollars? Is that the minimum?
Oh, that's the maximum it says.
Yeah, there's no, that's up to us or up to you. Um, okay, the the fee schedule is in in city code and I'm blanking right now. Emily may be able to enlighten me on whether there's actually a like a spreadsheet in the code that lists all of them. Yeah.
Okay.
One point two oh, point oh, three oh.
I I would support a lower fine. Keep in mind, we're, I mean, these, they're they're specifically fundraising. And so you're kind of going out there and taking away their, what they're trying to do.
My hope is that the police are not gonna cite them for anything. They're just gonna go out there, educate them, and they'll move along. I don't think they're gonna fight with the police over there. And that's why I say whether it's an ordinance or um, a state statute or code, I don't think it would be an issue if we go out there and tell them you're violating the law, please move along or I will cite you. They're not gonna say then cite me. I just don't think that's gonna happen.
Honestly, I'm more interested in a couple individuals that regularly panhandle in the city than I am in the teenage kid. Problematic um, that come into our city regularly. I I would support a hundred.
Well, are they walking out in the middle of the street? I I don't know who you're talking about, so.
Yeah, on on occasion they do.
So what I'm hearing is that we really, if we take out the exemptions and reduce the fine not to exceed one hundred dollars, for example, that that might be more acceptable to a majority of folks here.
I would vote in favor of that.
Any?
That's a real thoughtful look all night.
I would say um, lower the fine. I like the pamphlet idea, you know, where somebody, if they're gonna come get a um, um, what is it? Difficult, whatever it is, to do that. And we give them the pamphlet, then that would be a good route for whoever's in there to make sure everybody understands that we have to follow these rules. Lower the fine to what? I even say fifty bucks because those guys are out there trying to make the money.
And Chief?
Yeah, if I may, address the the council.
Please.
The idea of a pamphlet really strikes a chord with me because it's been a couple of years, but the Division of Natural Resources has changed the burn permit program. And in its current state, And in its current state. It requires a person to either download or visit a fire station and what they receive instead of where we used to fill out a huge form and that would send copies to forestry or whatever. Now they just simply get a pamphlet that has the information on how to burn safely on it. And they're accepting the responsibility. They have received that information. They should follow that information, and if they fail to, then they're liable because they didn't do what they were told. So the idea of a pamphlet slash permit thing, if there's a way to do that or change the permit form to something that requires you to come in, actually receive this information on how to safely you know, fundraise from a sidewalk in the city of North Pole, I think that would be ideal.
Thank you. Mr. Brand?
Maybe that's something that we could send to the the schools at the beginning of each school year, not just one time, you know, just to inform them. I just don't see the fundraisers going through our code to see what they have to do, you know, they're just going to go out there and do it. So I I don't, without us educating them on that form, they're not going to know about it to come in to to fill it out, if you know what I mean. But if, I mean, we could do both, we could require it, but also send it out to the schools just to educate them that this is. I I don't know. It that it's a little convoluted, but.
And if we have, if if this passes. We the police have no problem carrying those types of documents with them. Like we've done the same thing with ATVs on the roadway as an example. Like we like to take that with them. We're like, hey, here, read this, you know, this will this will help. So we're we're more than happy to carry those types of materials with.
I like that idea. So instead of requiring them to come in and get that, because like I said, they won't even know about that unless they sit down and go through our code, but you're not going to. Then instead of citing them, go in there, you know, have the pamphlet and go to them and say this is how we want you to to safely do this. I think that's a great idea.
If I may, sure. Number one, the newspaper might cover this, so that's probably how they'll find out about it. This through the coverage. Number two, so looking up the code, there's the first offense, second offense, and third offense for the fee schedule. And most of these are fifty dollars for the first, a hundred dollars for the second, and three hundred dollars for the third, which together that would be five hundred dollars. Not sure if that's where that came from. So I'm just kind of like going through this code to see what is this similar to? And there's unlawful to obstruct. Twelve point oh four point zero two zero is fifty dollars for the first offense, a hundred dollars for the second and three hundred dollars. A hundred and fifty dollars for the second and three hundred dollars for the third. I think this graduated case might be something to look at. Pertaining to offenses, would it be a struggle to keep track of what organization actually has the first defense and the second and the third?
This would be a much better one to just set a low flat one same fee, right? Because you're not going to heaven help us if we're going out there in like three days in a row, it's the same.
Same person, but different organizations.
Or just the same group like out here for a third time. And now I'm like, nobody's going to do that.
That brings up a question when we cite them. Are we citing individuals, each one of them that are out there doing this? How how would you even enforce this?
That's the question. So if if we have more more information here. Then that enables us to go, okay, out of this fifteen people, because I'm going to drive around and watch first, right? And pay attention to who's doing what. Out of these twenty people, these two are sitting on the bench. These two are standing on the sidewalk. These three were entering the roadway. Right? So I can differentiate between those three. I'm not going to cite everybody. I'm going to cite the ones that were doing the prohibited the prohibited conduct and then educate the others. If I had to, obviously, we're going to start with education. But that that would allow that. We treat them based on what they're what they're doing.
To Anton's question about keeping track of enforcing the first, second, third offense, it would be to an individual, not to an organization.
Yeah, citations always go to individuals.
Yeah, so the the court keeps track of that. We don't have to keep track of that.
We have to. We have to because we have to know which to enter.
Right, but I mean, it it will be on the court records or whatever, so.
Well, maybe, but if it's in within three days and it's over a weekend, it's not going to be in the court system yet, correct?
Right, but I don't think it's going to go there.
So I do like chief's idea of just a flat, one flat fee of a hundred dollars per incident, per individual.
I also, so with seatbelt tickets, it's, I think it's still fifteen dollars, or you can go donate that fifteen dollars to the fire department. Is that still the way it is? Could, I mean, I made a joke earlier, but could we set this up where they have the option to either pay a fine or I don't know, that money to something else?
It's a good idea.
No, not to the police.
And speaking of things, it's getting almost time for our meeting of the whole. Believe it or not, time flies when you're having fun. So it's twenty two after. And it's almost time for our six thirty meeting of the whole. So how would you like to wrap this up? Any suggestions?
I I want to going into the meeting when we when we do discuss this, I will make the amendment to strike all of the exemptions and lower the fine to I think fifty is acceptable.
Say fifty, y'all. Hundred dollars? Come on. These guys are out there trying to make money. And then give the money to.
If we say fifty for a first offense and two hundred or whatever for a second and and subsequent offenses or or a hundred or whatever. I think there might, there has to be a graduating.
Through through the chair, I'm sorry to interrupt you. I I agree. I don't. I don't care if the fine was five dollars, but yeah, I think there's got to be some kind of graduating. You know, I I Mr. Brand just kind of covered it there, but I think there's got to be some kind of graduating factor. And then also back to that, I wouldn't like. You know, I I think it should just be educational, and I think the chief touched on that. At least, you know, the first time, I don't want to see him write any, you know, ticket or anything like that for doing this. I just want, you know, I don't want him to, if this passes, him to go out tomorrow and just start, you know, writing tickets for fifty dollars. I I think there's a educational piece, and so I I'm not so worried about. It's not, he doesn't have to write the fifty dollar ticket, you know, I think.
And I hope it will never come to that.
Agreed, agreed.
I I think having a police officer come up to you and tell you this is you know, against the law, please move along should be should be enough.
All right, so Mayor Church, any last comment?
With regards to the permit. The sports teams of North Pole are already used to the permit. As was said earlier in this workshop. We have had requests for the permit and they have happened during our discussion already, and they are already used to the way the city has been operating with regards to the permit. I don't know why we would change that. They certainly don't need to dig through code to find that when they are already used to the process of the city of North Pole and filling out a permit. Thank you.
Thank you.
I I have one question for Mayor Church. Do you want your name taken off as a sponsor?
For the substitution that was presented as eleven A A, yes, but not the ordinance as was originally introduced. Thank you.
And Mayor Church, I'm going to close out this meeting and go off YouTube. You'll have to start your second invite to the Committee of a Whole in the regular meeting.
Thank you, everyone.